I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the little winner's notice. Thank you all for coming and please find us these, there's plenty of room up front if you want to move up closer. My name is Susan Ervin, I'm a board new Lady Women Voters and we're glad you could all be here today for this candidates for county commission forum. The Lady Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization with chapters on national, state, and local level. We are nonpartisan, we focus on voters' rights, legal issues, civil rights, women's rights, and we do have strong platforms, we take positions on the issues. If you want to read more about the lead, you can go to L W Z dot org. Today's forum is for our county commission candidates for district two, there are two seats. Ronnie Hill, a Democrat, is running for one of those two seats. Ron Haven, a Republican, a Republican. John Martin, Libertarian, and Gary Shields, Republican. You'll be able to vote for two of those for general winner. In district one, there's one seat available, James Tate, a Republican, and Michael Rogers, Democrat, running for those seats. Mr. Haven chose to leave the forum, he read our questions and didn't like them, and so he has, has not participated in the forum. The way this works is that each candidate gets the same questions that are timed, so that everyone gets the same amount of time. Christina Lanier will be at the timer, and she will let you know when you have 30 seconds left, and then when, like, raising her hand, and then she will wave at you vigorously when the timer's off. We do ask you to stick to the timing, so that everybody gets the same amount of time. Given the number of candidates, the time that we have for each question is fairly short. I had two questions that are sort of general questions, the first and the last question, and then in between, there are some questions that I have received from members, and then if there is time, we will take additional questions from the audience, and we certainly welcome, we hope everyone will be able to sit and speak with the candidates afterwards. Just to review what we'll be covering, the first question is for candidates to introduce themselves and to tell us about their approach to government, and why they don't want to serve as county commissioners. The second question is about fracking in western North Carolina. The third is about public school support. The fourth, which we may not get to, but we'll see, is about the Mayfair County Heritage Center. And the fifth is, the candidates have an opportunity to speak to whatever they wish to, especially would like to hear if there's something particular that they want to accomplish this term. So that's just a general view of where we're going. We're just going to pass the mic down the line, rather than have you all run up to the podium multiple times. You're welcome to stand or sit as you prefer. We'll start down on this end with Mr. Shields. Our district two candidates are these first three, and the district one candidates are this end. You will have two minutes for the first question, and then for the additional questions, also two minutes or three minutes for the closing question. So we will start with, the first question is, please introduce yourself, keeping the personal facts brief, and focusing on your approach to government, and tell us why you would like to serve as county commissioner.
Susan, before you start, Patricia Martin, a member, ask a question. Can you give that?
I want to say thank you to the Lady Women Voters. My name is Gary Shields, I'm a candidate for Lake County School Board, county commissioner from district two. First question here is talking about why, and I feel like exterior accounts, that's one of my proposals, of two thoughts, exterior accounts, then civic responsibility. And I feel like as a veteran, we've already worked with a lot of gender, race, and related to political affiliations, so we know how to work with people. Also, county leaders, like our veterans, must remember the sacrifice and role for our previous county leaders, same as veterans do. As a Vietnam veteran, and a squad leader, I learned leadership out of research, and I learned that you had to plan, and the team is the most important. The entry plan is good, and the exit plan has to be better. The 37 years in education, 29 those years in Mayfair County School System. Thank you very much.
That's a test of you.
No, it's one minute. One minute, you've got one minute left.
No way. Page two. Civic responsibility, when I retired in June 2010, I committed myself to being a volunteer within the community, a Mount Servile of Lake County Board of Education, Southwest Community College Board of Trustees, Angel Medical Center County Board as the Chair, I finished Kids' Place, Kids' Place is one of our advocacy centers for hope and healing, for abused children and their families, served at the Franklin Chamber of Commerce, and still serve at tourism and transportation. I'm a Rotarian, and I'm so proud of all the civic groups in Mayfair County.
I'd like to thank the Lady Women Voters for the invitation, they always do a good job. My name's Ronnie Bill, I'm lucky to have served you for eight years as your county commissioner. During that time, I think that we've accomplished much in Mayfair County. I've had a big, I think, served 10 different county commissioners, most of which have the good of the county part. So, I'm a native of Mayfair County, and most precious place to live that you could ever live. If you're not a native here, but you live here, you lose the right place. I was reelected, reelected in 2010, I have served on the minority, I have served as majority, I served as chairman for two years, and during that time, I can honestly say that regardless of which party of the delegation was in power, we managed to have the majority when we were our county board. And I'm proud of the work of these county commissioners that's on the board that we serve with today, the majority of them. During the time that I've been on the board, we've been able to circle from statewide committees, I also served as chairman of the Rural Penetration Committee of the region. By the way, if you have not heard, our project, which is very hard car, and that's the little four lane, decent highway, that's a building like the world, from McDonald's to the fire grand, where it has eight different turnoffs, that is now rule number two, the DOT, so we worked very hard for that. So this is one of the things we've worked on. I also got served as a chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee on a statewide level. I currently serve in the Crisis Intervention and Medicaid Waiver Committee on a statewide level. That's all I can do with mental health. If, if you know me very well, you know we've been very active for mental health. You have several folks in your ER right now, today, who we've been dealing with this morning. So it's an ongoing problem, we're going to tackle this thing in state law, with the help of our chairman, Kevin Corwin, on the legislative goals, we're working on that. I was elected second by the National Time Association County Committee in 2011, and was lucky enough to be elected president this morning in August 2012. That's a statewide office, we have several regional counties serving on the board, it's an opportunity to appoint over 50 folks. Next.
No, that's time.
It's August.
Come back.
I'm good. And now, Mr. John.
Well, thank you, Ronnie. Ronnie is one of my favorite Democrats as a part of it. You're certainly welcome. My name is John Martin, and I'm running for county commissioner in district two. I want to thank the Lady Women Voters for holding the forum. Would hope that perhaps before the November 4th date, that we could have some type of serious debates between the candidates. There are real differences, and, but again, I appreciate everyone coming today. I'm sure you could have been somewhere else doing something else, as we all could have. Well, why am I running for county commissioner, and you want to all look at the valley? I grew up in a Christian home, we were blessed with music, musical ability, all of our family. My brother, my brother Stephen, there's the, yeah, thank you. My brother Stephen Martin came down from East Beach, teaches band, all of his playing instruments, and saying, some better than others. But anyway, about the, my philosophy is that we should preserve as much liberty as possible, against documents overriding the US Constitution, Bill of Rights, and the North Carolina Constitution, and then government, all government, all the government, I think, when it really boils down to it. But how much government do we want? Does everybody like candy, some type of candy, chocolate? Does everybody like chocolate? Raise your hand if you like chocolate. Everybody likes chocolate, right? Well, pieces of chocolate is good for you, and it's healthy, and it tastes good, but if you eat a pound of chocolate, you're probably going to get sick. And if you eat 100 pounds of chocolate, it's probably going to kill you. So my, that is my philosophy, is about government that is required, that is constitutional, and is necessary, we should, but try to be taxes as low as possible, so, and be frugal in spending. Government money is taxpayer money. So, thank you very much for attending, I'm welcome to everyone who wants to speak later. Thank you.
Can you all hear me okay? I'm gonna try and get by without. Again, I'm Jim Tate, I'm from the living Highlands, and I'm either a fifth or a sixth generation McConian, according to which one of my grandmothers you have, so very proud of them. I've been married for 15 years, I have two children coming through the Highlands School System, one in fourth grade, one in sixth grade. Don't hold it against me, but I'm a graduate of University of Georgia, I busted my bag to get a tour ride down there, and I got it. So I also have full paid education at University of Georgia, graduated there with three M A C of architecture, and since I graduated, I moved back home, and all I've done is want to get involved and help our county be all that it can be. So I get asked all the time, well, why would you want to be a county commissioner? Well, it must be for the money. You don't do it for the money. Well, it must be for the power and the prestige. Now, if you don't do it for the power and prestige, I assure you that you get more mud and rocks thrown at you than you do pats on the back. You do it because you love this county, and that's why I'm here, that's why I want to continue to be a county commissioner, and I'll continue to fight for y'all in Mayfair County all the time. As I mentioned, I'm either a fifth or a sixth generation, and I hope my kids will want to stay here. And how can I help ensure that, how can I ensure that their kids will stay here, and make the county the best place in the southeast of Donald World, and that's what I'll bow out for.
Anyway, my name is Michael Rogers, and I'm a Republican, yes, but, but I've lived in Highlands for 52 years. I was born here in Franklin, lived in Highlands, Montarlough, I graduated there in 1981. All I have is a high school degree, I graduated there from Allen Highlands High School. I got two daughters, Courtney and Maggie. Courtney and Maggie both went to school in Highlands, and they are both graduates at Western Carolina University, and Courtney is a senior there, she'll be graduating here this year. And anyway, what I want to do for Franklin and for the Highlands area, what my main concern is, is the water. I mean, we, you know, we've got all those sewer plants that control water up there, starts at Wildcat, or something, you know, the Coliseum Station Club, you know, we have the Highlands Falls Country Club, then the County Highlands, and so there's up over the Rabbit River Lake Supply there, and then all construction on the Coliseum Station River in Franklin. And what I want to do, you know, I'm really concerned, and that's something that's got to be addressed, we've got to, we've got to get on this, we can't be waiting. It's, I mean, anytime you put impurities into the water, you know, it affects the river bottom, and it affects us all, you know, and it's very important, and this thing has been going on and on and on, and nothing's getting done. Anyway, so my main goal is to, I want to get the water clean up, I want to create more jobs here in Franklin. Franklin is the one I want to focus on, and I think, you know, Highlands is in pretty good shape, also we got ELEA and all that cool one up there, you know, our economy is good. And Franklin's, I just feel like these guys make a struggle, they don't get paid what they, they need to be paid, you know, driving around for $10 an hour. And I just want to see Franklin, you know, be a, be a better place, I want to see more jobs, and I want to see economics, you know, the sewer, the water, you know, extended out, you know, countywide sewer water, and get where people can hook up to it, and, you know, clean up the whole, the water, and get our, you know, our economy down here back on track. And these people, they really struggle, I think we were the Pine Road Church for nine years, and we're currently now on Broken Earth Field, where we're kind of backwards and forth, we kind of feel like we've done, next time. Anyway, that, I guess that was enough. Anyway, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you all. We will change the order this time and start with Mr. Martin. The second question is, funding for fracking exploration in western North Carolina has been temporarily canceled, but the issue has certainly not been resolved. Citizens have been speaking out, and a lot of information on fracking and its possible effects has been made public. Would you support a county resolution against exploration of fracking in Mayfair County? Please answer with a clear yes or no, and then explain your position.
Two minutes, yes.
Thank you very much, Susan. With regard to this question about fracking, I'm fairly well versed with this issue in North Carolina. I've been researching fracking long before the law was passed, where, as y'all probably all know, Jim Davis, our representative, was co-sponsored. I do not support this law, for a number of reasons, and those people who have stated that fracking is, has been going on in the US since 1947, actually that's a different type of fracking that was going on there, and it really wasn't the same thing. So there are a lot of different reasons that I'll be glad to discuss with people as to why I'm opposed to the fracking law in North Carolina. And one of them, of course, is the, the ability to force people to, with the agency, to get in order, to require people to allow fracking on their land, but that's just one issue. Okay, so it's nonpartisan, we have no vote or county authority over this issue. Now, with regard to taxes, we do. Our taxes act in profit 40% for next year, how many people are aware of it? You get that with the base, 30%, they add your fire district, and the average fire district increase was 10%, 30% on the base, total 40%. Of course, we're happy to agree that, that is correct, but those numbers are a problem that they are correct. The bottom line is, and I have a lot of retirees, widows, who've told me that they cannot afford another $100 or $200 a year of property taxes, that they're all fixing up like social security, $600, $700 a month. So, you know, how much government do we need, should we give it money to charities, taxpayer money, and other issues? So, again, that's, that's where I stand, is, you know, we need to watch our money, how it's being, thank you.
The fracking issue, it brings up three distinct things that really bother me as county commissioner. Number one, I was interroding this and being discussed, the first thing that was done, any input from the counties was done lately. We have no input. Any law that we have or are looking now, including our erosion control, things that we've worked hard in for the, to save the road in our county, none of that applies. So that's number one, when it comes to fracking. Number two, when it comes to fracking, there's not a soul in this room, or in that county, don't say we don't need something to substitute fossil fuel, but is this the right thing to substitute? Fracking is this thing called compulsory pooling. If you don't know what that is, that deals strictly with property rights. And what this is, if us three right here could have three houses, Gary and Mr. Martin could agree, they want fracking on their land. Well, undistinct pool, huh? Yeah, just one. They can run that flexible hose right under my property, and, and really never even have to. So if it's not a property rights issue, the county has to say so. The other thing that bothers me is a builder, anytime you put steel in the ground, hit wheel, it tight hangings on, it's something you know, you put in the ground, it's getting out absolutely carrying. Forty years is nothing, it's exactly been 40 years. But 40 years in the life of anything is not much. So, there's a lot of things to be done about fracking, and really worrying about water controls when it comes to it. So, I think this issue was rushed through very quickly by all the states that do fracking. One of the things that's never been, is the impact that fracking does on the candidates other than the fracking. The people that moved in that followed this business. I would have to be and watch that leadership conference, and the lady was telling me about the fracking, she said, it's not the fracking, it's the fish that's coming up the fossil. So it brings another impact on the candidates, people that have the kids, too. Do you know how many taxes they pay overseas? And she gave me that. Thank you very much. A picture of me?
The question, would I support a resolution regarding fracking? I would support that. My opinion is that there's not enough transparency within this, we did not have a say-so in it, but also, I was raised in the part of Cartic J where micro was mining, and when I was growing up, we did not have the mineral rights on the property that I own now, and so I understand losing that property right, these people in my home, or in the family that decided that they itself did mineral rights, and not understanding how that compounded the children who inherited the land and wanted to do. So, I've had some experience with this. I try to be nice when I say this, if you don't have input, a lot of times there's denial to it. I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I'm now taking two and a half pills a day of grated orange, and so to tell me that the truth is on the table, I say bull.
Okay, what, this fracking, you know, I've told you guys, I've been in the construction business all my life, and, you know, we work, we're still in the drilling and sheeting business, I'm from the diamond, and that's what I've done, me and my dad, that's all I've, you know, I've done it for years, like, 25 years is what I'm, I'm messing with that stuff. And with this fracking bill, it's nothing but, in all of this, it's a major problem. It will destroy our water, and, you know, it does, when it happens, it's done, damage is done, there's no fixing it. And I'm strictly against it, I don't support it, and I think we need to just shut that down completely, and, you know, I'll probably pay a price for this, but I'm just the way to say it, you know, you cure your problems, it's not Jim Davis, that, Jim Davis is your problem, and you need to get, this is one time right here, the Republicans say you wake up, we need to get rid of it, and get him out of it, because it's, he's all for it, and I'm against it, we don't need it. That's all I'm gonna say.
This is a political hot potato, it's the first time I've been put on the spot with this, because we as committee members behind the doors decided not to take this up locally, but I'm afraid to give you my opinion on it. I 100% agree with Commissioner Bill's answer, and personally, am I for fracking? Yes, I am. Am I for fracking in Mayfair County? No, I'm not. My opinion, tourism is our most important industry here, and it's something that we need to protect, and I don't think those two go everything in. So, am I for fracking? Yes, or not? I say no. So I'm glad I gave you all a great answer on this, I'm kind of down a little bit. The worst thing about this is, is that we legally don't have that decision to make, because the state's taking it out of our hands. So, would I vote for Mayfair County? Probably not. If Brotherford County or one of these counties in Piedmont decide to, then I'm all for it, that's what they expect us for their county.
Thank you all. The third question, let's see, I guess we'll just go straight down on this time, not be too confusing. Some politicians claim that public school funding has been reserved, while others see clear cuts such as the loss of teacher assistance, more experienced teachers not getting enough raises, increased class size, and textbook shortages. As a county commissioner, what would you do, not say, to keep our public schools strong?
I had the fortune to be on the school board, still am on the Lake County School Board. I have seen and felt and observed the cuts in education. I've seen the classrooms get larger, I've seen the curriculum reduce, and I've seen a lot of frustration within this focus that we have on education this time. You ask me, as a county commissioner, what would I do to keep a public school strong, knowing the process, the budget process, that the school board goes through, and we present to the county commissioners? That is done with a lot of thought, it's not something just, we're doing this today, and we're presenting to them tomorrow. There's a lot of thought in current expense, there's a lot of thought in your council that way, and there's a lot of work that's done from the county. So, what would I do? I respect the work that has been done by the school system that brings the information request to the county commissioners, and at that time, we will study and act and deck away. Thank you.
Just to clarify on the timing, Christina holds up the one finger, that means you had one minute, and then she'll wave when you had two minutes, so, when you see that first finger, don't think you're done.
Seven years ago in Mayfair County, we established a school league, committee, the commission of the school board, first time it's been done, I guess, before, Mr. Corwin was on the board, on the school board, and, back when, you know, they did not have that liaison, but since the liaison has been appointed, we work closely with the committee appointed by the school board, and the student candidate, and the county commissioner. And so what has that accomplished? Well, during the, in the past ten years, there's not one school in Mayfair County, it's not a new school, the other schools have been refurbished and redone, and I'm proud to say, come under budget most of the time, all the time, and, so we're very proud of that. The obligation of county commissioners is real simple, if you don't know how it works. Our job is to provide a rich environment for the children. But Mayfair County has much more. If you remember what this board has done lately, the only a technology that's a $700,000 on the, on the stain. Anything a school has needed, regardless of what the state does, and if you think the state does is not effective, we are now ready, the lowest, worst place for a teacher to practice their location, out of 52, the county Puerto Rico. So, those right lives behind us that just went by was Mississippi. If you're proud of that today, and you're a Fort Wayne, and you're a McConian, there's nothing to be proud of. So public education, but it all comes home to the county's issue. And I think I'm speaking for myself and this board, that we take public education very seriously. We've been testing, a lot of your tax dollars, a lot of my tax dollars, in the public education, and we will do whatever it takes to make our public education strong. We've kept our substance to the teacher, to try to keep our teachers informed, to support our teacher, we're so blessed to have a school. We're so blessed to have a school system that we have in Macon County. And so you can count on my support, convenience for public education and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Well, this question about education, I am a strong proponent of education and I am for parental choice in education. True parental choice. Mr. Shields, along with the Macon County School Board members, joined the lawsuit to oppose the opportunity scholarships that North Carolina was funding and passed a law allowing poor parents, poor families, to get a scholarship for their children up to forty-two hundred dollars tuition. Again, this money is not coming out of Macon County Schools money, this is coming from the state. But the state funds teachers, this is their responsibility. It is not our responsibility to fund teachers. Under North Carolina law, it is our responsibility, as Mr. Bill stated, to fund bricks and mortar schools. Now, there also is in the North Carolina Constitution, if you read it, a provision that says school construction, new school construction, will be funded through a school bond referendum. Now, that has never been repealed from the North Carolina Constitution or amended, rather. That's never been amended. Now, North Carolina did pass a law some years ago allowing a state fund for LEAs, local education authorities, school boards, and counties to borrow money directly from the state for school construction, which is what has been happening in Macon County. We have not had a school bond referendum passed in Macon County since, I believe the last one was prior to nineteen ninety-two, but we have built a number of schools. So again, I have supported education, I believe in innovation and creativity. I support Macon Early College, I support charter schools, I support online schools. And all of these things have proved to be very productive. But remember, all of those are public schools. Charter schools are public schools, one hundred percent public schools, as well as the online schools that North Carolina is now providing. Thank you very much.
If you remember my introduction, I was talking about education. Extremely important in my life, I would be where I am today if it wasn't for my educational opportunities. I believe in nothing but excellence in education. And as we mentioned, I'll do nothing but strongly support our education, our capital infrastructure, our teachers, everything we can, and give our youth the best opportunity they can. Y'all dig deep with me here because I'm gonna talk a little bit of maybe a brand or skill. If you look at society as a whole, I mentioned I'm a fifth or sixth generation from Macon County, what is truly the most important thing to keep the society moving forward and going? It's education. And because of that and for many other reasons, I will strongly support. I think almost half of our budget is given now. I'll continue to push it just as hard as we can. I think we've actually increased our funds there every year since I've been the commissioner. And if we can continue to afford that, I'm strongly supportive of it.
Well, you know, I just want to say that we are, I think we've got the best school system that, you know, in the whole state. You know, we've got beautiful schools and all these guys over here, they put a lot into the schools. And frankly, down here, I drive a bus, I got the crews driving a bus off through the county and I got to know, you know, a lot of people down here and, you know, live here all my life and, you know, got to see a lot of variation that I've never seen before. And it was just a real blessing. But anyway, I'm a supporter for the schools and I want to see these guys get paid what they need to be paid so they can, you know, we can get the best education we can get. And I also want to see Southwest, you know, I want to see it expand out here in Macon County and Franklin so that we can, you know, we can teach these kids, you know, we can prepare for jobs that we offer, you know, around here. And it's not all about, you know, it's not all office jobs, you know, we need labor force, we need to get, you know, the electrical plumber, the landscaper, so you know, just to help them down the line. Anyway, school is important to me and, you know, when you guys, when you guys are letting me in, I'll work close with Jan Hibs and I'll work real close with, you know, with all the other ones, Kay Hackett, to get the money that we need to bring here to Macon County to make our schools look fast. But I want to see, we got the building, we just need to, you know, we need to keep the teachers there, we need, they need good payment, they can't, you know, that's hard for them in Macon. You know, if you got good payment, bring good people in there, that's what I'm looking for. And that's what I promise I'll do. Thank you.
On this next question, I'm going to broaden it a little from what you have on your paper. And so listen to how I'm gonna change this a little. The question originally was, the Heritage Center of the Old Cowie School has a world of activities for the community. A successful concert series, artist studios and displays, historical displays and programs, community gardens, farmer's market, exercise classes, et cetera. In the last term, finding through Heritage Center was supported by Mr. Corbin, Mr. Beal, and Mr. Tate, but not Mr. Hayden or Mr. Hicken. What is your position on the Heritage Center and would you vote for county support in the future? I want to expand that to your general approach of spending tax dollars for cultural services such as the Heritage Center and other activities in the county. I received a question just as we were getting started on the forum about a tax rate increase of thirty percent plus an average of approximately ten percent increase for the fire districts. So on one hand, we have tax rates possibly going up, we have a lot of things that we need to spend the money on. So this would be your opportunity to talk about tax rates and how do you choose what to fund? And we would appreciate a piece of reference to the Macon County Heritage Center. And so I'll start with Mr. Martin's time.
Thank you, Susan. With regard to, back up just one second, North Carolina public schools funding, North Carolina funding for public schools in North Carolina has increased. You know, you're entitled to your own opinions, but you're not entitled to your own facts. Federal funding for education at the public school level has decreased. And this is where, you know, the figures you can use them any way you want, people can kind of prove different things with figures. But the bottom line is, funding from North Carolina for public schools has increased. And you can look up the numbers on that, if you spend one dollar more than you did the previous year, that's an increase. Okay, now, let's talk about tax rates and about the Heritage Center. The Heritage Center is one of the things, but it's honest, this is not a county-owned entity. It is a nonprofit. There are lots of nonprofits in Macon County. Now, if I'm wrong about that, that Macon County actually owns it. I'm not talking about the building, I know they own the building, but the heritage organization is a nonprofit. And so, that's a personal, I guess, okay. So you should be funding nonprofits of whatever stripe, of whatever type. Yes, nonprofits do some great things, and I support a lot of nonprofits. My wife and I, we believe we should be taking taxpayer money to do that when you are having citizens who are having very tough time, people on a fixed income. Now, check out the tax rate increase. You're, some of the people didn't believe when I said it, it's a thirty percent increase on the base. That is actually, it's like twenty-nine point eight percent or something like that, so I don't have it up to third. The tax increase is an average of all of them together. So when I have people come to me and say, I'm having trouble as it is, I'm not paying my bills, I can't afford a bigger tax bill on my land and other things, a lot of wood. So I'm not willing to ask them to pay higher taxes to fund nonprofits. Thank you very much.
Two thousand, I was happy to be a part of the Heritage Center. From the construction board, myself negotiated that deal with the school board and with support of our board, it became ownership of Macon County. The Cowie School was completed in nineteen forty-two, is the last building completed of the D U P A in Macon County. The county does own the building, we have to have a board to oversee that, it's not the heritage folks that I know of. It's local county development club, people across the county that the county commissioner appoint to the board. We made a commitment for three years to try to get this structure soon because we wanted to place a destination. Working with the L T, Land Management Little Tennessee, who have the old regional store, we think of great possibilities with the Heritage Center, that's total approval. The activities that the center is picking up, sort of the donations. Our three-year commitment ends in two thousand fifteen, but we will see where we're at at that time, because it's important to our community. If you're not from Macon County, it's probably not as important to you, heritage of our place is probably not as important to you as it is to me. All my grandmother's folks were raised on Huckleberry on Cowie. All my children with the Cowie students, which is important to me personally. So more than that, it can be important to this county. And looking down the road in ten years, I think people will see a great benefit in preserving the County Heritage Center for just what it says. We may have wonderful exhibit art, these are bands that have not been there, they have wonderful concerts, they have farmer's markets. It's not only, to me, it's not the county, it's for the county. And it will become a place that, here already is becoming a destination place, it will become more so. So I fully support the Cowie Heritage Center, I think in time, it's one of those things that will prove very beneficial for the city's tax dollars put into it to preserve this building, give it something we'll cherish as a county for a long, long time. Thank you.
I support the Heritage Center, sometimes you have to spend a little money on the front end and gain a little money on the back end. And I'm part of Heritage Center. I had the opportunity to spend some time with opt-in, an in-service program over the past year. And I was always intrigued by the goal to enhance the economy, the economic development while preserving heritage and culture. Well, I also had the opportunity a few weeks ago to attend an EDC meeting. Tourism is our bread and butter. And in two thousand twelve, over a hundred and thirty-five million dollars brought in in tourism. Two thousand thirteen, over a hundred and forty million dollars was brought in. So this might, the Heritage Center is one of the many things that we have here in Macon County that attracts people coming here. If tourism is our bread and butter, I'm for it.
Tom, I think y'all probably already got a good feel for how I stand with a lot of this, but I'm definitely in support of continuing to protect not only our cultural heritage and our natural heritage. It's just not the Cowie Community Center, but we give money to scaling, wealth springs, pine groves, in numerous communities that we've helped support. It's not a tremendous amount of money like the, as I'm pointing, like the Sheriff's Department is, like Republic Safety is, like the education, it's a very minimal amount. It's so important to these communities and it's important to me and I think it should be important to all of us to try and preserve this for our future generations to have some type of knowledge and education of what was here before them. And again, I'll continue to support this. Taxes, part of this, we have a little more time. Part two, your question. As all of y'all know, we have one of the lowest tax rates in the state and I plan on keeping it that way. I know we're going for a group, a current revaluation, which will happen next year. Some people are gonna get a tax increase, some people are gonna get a tax decrease, and a very few people are gonna stay the same. So some people will get some good news, some people will be bad news. But as long as we continue to run Macon County government as efficiently as we possibly can, we'll continue to have some of the lowest tax rates in the state and in the southeast and in the nation like we do now from here out. And I'm very proud to stand behind, so we're looking for a lot of impact as soon as possible.
You know, the nonprofits, I'm all for the nonprofits. And they bring money to the county and, you know, that's what, you know, it's all about, it's about helping people, you know, and that's, you know, that's what we're about, you know, taking the money where it needs to be and distributing it well, you know. Anyway, as far as the taxes, you know, you're gonna have to reevaluate and, you know, these guys, they can't help it, but, you know, the taxes, everything's gonna be reevaluated. And when it is, you know, if you go up the taxes, some of it's gonna be lower, but the military's gonna go up, so basically you're gonna be paying about the same tax you are now. It's gonna be, now that we all gotta pay tax and, you know, anybody sends up a retention bank, wanna, you know, five, ten, lower tax and all that, I just don't believe that. Anyway, the heritage building, all that stuff is important, you know, brand funding has a whole lot of heritage to do with, you know, especially with the Indians and all the things that's, you know, it's just history, the area. I'm all about preserving stuff and that's very important to me. Anyway, when it comes to nonprofits, again, I'm supporting for it, I'm backing one hundred percent. Thank you.
We're to our final question.
Tendril.
Tendril. Okay, we'll let you take three minutes for this final question. You can tell us anything you want us to do, if there's any issue you want to. One thing might be to tell us about what you most hope to accomplish this term, but this is, is your time, you take three minutes and Mr. Confucius will start, this is one, Mr. Tendril.
I've used this analogy before, so if some of you in the room is heard this, please forgive me if you're rehearing it again. But I think it's good for y'all, thanks for y'all to have that to hear my analogy of how I would like to continue governing. Let's just pretend this room here is a ship and I'm your captain. We're not gonna sail too fast, we're not gonna sail too slow, we're gonna have a nice, steady, smooth ride. We're not gonna worry about pirates because I'm gonna make sure, Sheriff Hollins has the funds that he needs to make sure that we're fully protected. Our ship's gonna be open for business, ready for business, and willing for business. Our ship's not gonna be the fanciest in the world, it's not gonna be the poorest in the world, but it is gonna be kept neat and clean and in perfect working condition. Y'all be ready when we step forth? Again, I'm not gonna be right, I'm not gonna be left, I'm basically gonna be driving our ship right down the middle of the ocean. And when we run into a problem, we're gonna study it. If it's best to go full steam ahead right through it, we're gonna do that. If it's best to turn right or left, we're gonna do that. If it's best to drop anchor for a little while, we're gonna drop anchor for a little while. But again, we're gonna have a good, clean, smooth ride. We're gonna be physically responsible with our funds, we're gonna be open for business, we're offering our kids good education, and we're gonna be very comfortable as a movement.
Okay, one of the things that, you know, that I want to see happen in here in Franklin, you know, I'm a twelve stepper right there and that's, you know, it's a drug and alcohol program. I want to get, I want to put in a, you know, a place that we can have twelve step meetings, but the meetings, you know, that I participate in to run up are spiritual. And that's what we think about, I think it's a big need here in Franklin, you know, I'm a, I wanna fight, wanna work with Mr. Holland over here about, you know, with the drugs, the drug problem, the meth, it's a problem in Macon County. I've got a plan that'll wipe that out and I mean, I'm taking, I take it very serious. People get killed, laws are, this is drug, hey, and I'm gonna fight that all the way in. The other thing you guys have heard me talk about is the State Park. You know, I've mentioned it before, this didn't even happen. And it's, you know, it's what it is, it's gonna take some work, but it can be done. And it involves our four counties, it's Jackson County, Macon County, Wavy County, and Irwin County County, Chatham Beach, Anahala, and Southern National Forest. It's a section. I want to take it out, I want to put together, bring the right people to this county. We'll all work together, Holland, Spren, Anahala, all of us, we'll work together to publicize this thing and bring the right people to help our, you know, it will help our economy tremendously. And this thing runs, you know, it's year-round, it doesn't close down. And Cliffside is, I want to, you know, try to get that, that's a part of it, and this thing consists of cabins, it's not camps, it's, you know, it's camping, and then if we got cabins and there's four locations, well, actually five, that this will happen. And I have a plan and I want you guys to stand with me and help me, I'm gonna push this until we get it, until we get it in. It's gonna work, it'll bring the right people, it's what we need, it's good for us to protect our water, it'll clean up everything, it'll protect all the forests, it'll clean up this whole area. Anyway, if something you think about, I'm working at it to get it done, I'm gonna get, if I get back in the end, I'm gonna get it put in. I can show you that, I'll make sure that happens. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Susan. Again, I think we are fortunate to live and have grown up in Macon County and Western North Carolina, and so we're blessed. Look at the beautiful nature we have here, needs to be protected. As I said, fracking, I totally oppose to fracking as it is done under the North Carolina law. I don't like fracking the way there have been problems in other areas such as Pennsylvania, Divide III, and Colorado, and other places. But again, that is an issue that has to resolve at the state level. We don't have locally, towns or counties don't have any authority to restrict it or prohibit it. And yes, the M E C has the power under that law to bundle properties, and I think it's a little more than a hose that they put under your land. They can explode, crack those layers, and they drill down anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000 feet, sometimes even further. Then they drill horizontally and explode those layers, and you have injected somewhere in, they put an average of 3 million gallons of water with a lot of contaminants that we're not even allowed to know what's in it. So, I do oppose fracking, and those who say that fracking was done since 1947, not like this. This type of fracking's only been done for about 12 years. Anyway, let's move on there, we have no local authority over that issue, but you should let your representatives at the state know how you feel about that.
Second, my first minute.
You've got one minute left.
I've got, I have three minutes.
You do, you talk for two minutes.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Now, nonprofits, let's talk about nonprofits for a minute. There are a lot of nonprofits that do great work. Sparking, Franksy Heritage Center is one, right here, it does great work. It doesn't get any funding from the county, no money from the town of Franklin, they are based in Franklin, they have a place for Halloween, also help young girls who become pregnant and step on, have abortions so they can put their babies up for adoption. I think they do great work, but they don't get any state funding or local funding, and yet they do this fine. To see nonprofits, they get money in a lot of different ways, but one of ways is from donations from individuals and grants or donations from businesses. So, nonprofits, again, the Cal A school, the building, is owned by the county, but the other thing we're talking about that they're getting money for is non-county, that is nonprofits, that's a nonprofit. Okay, so, and now with regard to school funding, again, complex issue, but we are required locally to do bricks and mortar. Swain County does not pay a supplement to their teachers, if you want to compare. I know those counties do, and I think I'm out of town, but I want to thank you all for coming in and vote John Harton on November 4th for liberty and appreciation.
The reason I ran for county commissioner for those six is the same reason I'm running today. Maxipad work to improve the quality of life in Macon County citizens, not the hardest to do that. You don't do nothing by yourself when you're county commissioner. You can get out there and beat the drum and holler as you want to, but as long as you have a regard in the board that you can work with, you'll come from zero. I've been very fortunate to work with boards that have encouraged, not only me, but others. I mean, that the Dialysis Center. The Dialysis Center, remember, first of all, they said, yeah, that will never happen, you will never get that done. Well, board members, some of you today encouraged me, said, go for it. We went for it, we took nine, fifteen, a lot of hard and a lot of effort, but today, people in Macon County are receiving life-saving, life-saving treatment and not having to cross the mountain in the winter. Some of these vote for my long list, but, but that's one example. When you're a county commissioner, you got to have support from others, you might see things that need to be done. So, that's really not necessarily county commissioner, it certainly, not because of your business.
Agreement, Ken.
But, so you could just have a position type of head folks, and I think, not necessarily because of crime deal, but being president of the County Commission Association of the State gives us a unique perspective and position. I live here this evening going to do handle the county. You might know what that is? You can't get tired from here. But if you handle it, you're also going to talk about mental health. We'll have a mental health secretary of the Health and Human Services, will be there in the morning. So, one of my issues, saying about is about mental health. I got involved in mental health many years ago. Here's the, here's the thing, it's robbing, not only the families of our county, it's robbing our budget. The sheriff's budget is going to need to save $300,000. It's $300,000 closer we've contributed to this system that we can put in wherever we need, for the decapitation program, whatever it may be. You're going to hear a lot about that in the coming year if I'm able to win the election. I thank you for the opportunity to serve you as a commissioner. This is sort of political here today, we're all liberal parties, but I tell you one thing, if you're elected county commissioner, you, if you're interested in helping folks, doing the right thing, you forget the D R L, whatever the letter may be, that's the name, and you'll work hard for the folks that you live with. The reason is, they can find you. You go out and find your congressman in the next 15 minutes, your senator, anybody else besides the county commissioner. So, and that's fine, and that's the way you want it, and it'd be accessible, easy to get to, and when you talk to us, we'll find a way to solve the problem. I'll continue to work hard for you, as you see. You're guilty of voting, you'll vote November 4th. Early voting again is October 23rd, it only lasts a week, don't get confused by all these rules and regulations during voting. Don't get confused, if you are confused, call the board of elections. So, thank y'all for the opportunity to work for you, Larry, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Everything I said today, you can forget, but I want you to remember one, one word, resume. You all know what a resume is. Your resume of this county is of utmost importance. If I look at the word resume and what it means to an individual, a county, town, it is a reference point of what you're about. Let's look if they are, when you go here today, you think about these things, you say, now, what is he going to stand for? Hold on to the word resume. Recreation. I believe in recreation. I believe in recreation of young people from 5 to 95, and I think we have that. In this county, that's one of the things that's conducive to people coming here, is our recreation. I will be head over heels in the, in the letter E, as central education. I believe in public education, I'm a product of public education, I worked in public education 37 years, and it is a balance act. I believe in our South Florida Community College, I believe in Western Carolina University. I believe in our teachers, they're heroes in my book, and the young people, they're getting the service that we want them to have. So, I will always be a supporter of education. The S in resume stands for safety. It's the most important thing for people, businesses that are coming in, people that are coming in, want to know if their community's safe. Every community, Sheriff Hall is there, that's highly thought of. You've got 9/11 services, you've got fire departments, all these things within a community, that's part of your resume, that makes you sleep at night, or lets you sleep at night because you feel comfortable. Then the U in resume, underemployed, unemployed, or employed. That also allows people who are coming in to evaluate the data of people who are working, not working, and prospective workers. The M stands for medical, but it stands for health services. The health services that we have here in Macon County and in Franklin area, we are a hub for health services. Mr. Beal's mixing the B A Center, I'll mix the cancer center. We have a health park, we have a V A center, we are in a luxury area, being the last E of the resume, environment. I'll always be a proponent of a clean environment, and so, if something's coming up, and you say, well, I don't know how he's going to stand, if you take that word resume, that's what I'll be fighting for. Thank you. Hope, hope on your November 4th, or here next time, I'm here, you see it. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you all so much for giving us your time today, talking with us, letting us know what your thoughts are on all these important topics. Just to reiterate, early voting does start on October 23rd, Russell's November 1st at the Macon County Courtyard, at the Highland Civic Center, and of course, you can vote in your own polling place on November 4th. Thank you all for coming, it was great having you here, and thank you again so much again.